All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the beginning of the fun stuff. Everybody happy? So tonight, we're going to go through Board of Education budget, town budget. As council members, we're here to receive the budgets and kind of it's not the time for us to kind of do the, you know, deep dive into any of this stuff. So we'll just receive all the information tonight. And then next week, our workshops again will begin, and then we can do what we need to do. So we're here to listen.
Yeah, so that's, tonight, you've been presented the budget. You have the binders. The expectation is that you're going to take a look at that, read it, and be prepared when starting the workshops for opportunity for council engagement on the budget and giving input and direction for the spending plan draft version that you have in front of you. You have a budget message from me, which in narrative form gives you some of the high level review of the budget, gives you some analysis on the town side of the budget, where our expenditures are, as well as a general overview of the entire budget and revenue and rate of taxation. You've got the PowerPoint presentation from me in front of you, which is another way of looking at the budget message that you have. So just to start in, the budget process that we are about to launch is a process of establishing priorities and allocating scarce resources. Those scarce resources are tax dollars, state grants and aid, and the other revenue streams that we have that support funding for services. Scarcish resources imply that there's going to be competition.
It's part of the plan.
Some of those scarce resources include apparently technologies. On the other screen, we can try and get that working. Finally, one coming up. That one's not on. So as you go through your process of dealing with competition, you're going to be making choices. Choices went into the budget at the staff level. That's been offered for you. It is one set of priorities. I'm expecting that there'll be council engagement going through our review during the workshops to discuss your thoughts and ideas on priorities of how you want to see the budget roll forward. Contains the best information we have available at this time. As has been the issue in prior years, we're starting early. And as we go through our reviews, both during your workshops and then after the public hearing in April, we're always refining and getting new numbers, new updates. So we've got a certain number of assumptions that are in a state of flux at this point in time. Healthcare would be one. It impacts both the town side of the budget and the education side of the budget. We're both in the same healthcare group. We're relying on the state to tell us what those premiums are going to be. There's been a swing. That swing keeps narrowing. So hopefully, as we go through this conversation, we'll get a little bit more clarity from the comptroller's office on the direction of healthcare premium, as an example. The budget is more than a bunch of numbers. It's not just a spreadsheet. There's services. There's people behind those numbers. And it's an attempt to address both competing priorities as well as pressures. You've got external pressures on the town that we have to respond to. So as I noted last night, the governor's budget cuts municipal aid to Clinton. So that's an external pressure that we have to now respond to. And when the governor cuts state aid and reduces funding to a municipality like Clinton, that's an immediate shift on taxpayers here to have to shoulder that. So there is a cause and effect. When the governor shorts us, that puts pressure on our side. There's also internal pressures over how we're going to deliver services, where you want to see capital spending going, your priorities. Those become the issues that we also have to balance on the other side. And I'll give you an overview of some of the challenges that are in the document that you have tonight. Right now, total budget expenditures are proposed to increase by 5.22%. That's everything. That's education, town, debt service, and capital. The tax rate to support that proposed level of expenditure is a 3.22% increase in the mill rate. So as has been the case in the past number of budgets, and different from how you did budgeting before with the Board of Finance, proposal, proposed use of expenditures does not always mirror on the revenue side. So the disconnect is we've got growth in the grand list, which provided additional tax revenue coming in. There's a heavy appropriation from undesignated fund balance. Those are factors in how you get that difference between where the spend rate is versus where the mill rate projection goes. And that was the same case last year and the year before that. So on a granular level, this gives you the breakdown between the different components of the budget. So the town side is going from 17.3 to roughly 18.3, which is a 5.62% increase. Board of Ed's operation budget goes from 34.5 to 35.4 million, which is 2.59%. Debt service, regardless of how we slice it between the town and the Board of Education, is net reducing, and that follows our amortization schedule as we slowly start tapering down where bonded indebtedness is going for the town. Capital, as I just said, is pretty heavy going into this year. So there's roughly a million dollar increase on the town side and a $224,000 increase on the Board of Ed side. The percentages are large, particularly on the Board of Ed side, because you're going from something small to something larger. So the bottom line is you're going from 59.6 million to 62.7 million. That gets you your 5.22% increase. Going into what you have in front of you, I've already cut over $8 million out of the budget. Majority of that is on the capital side. The operating side was a little lighter cut. So again, I'll be looking for council engagement over some of these numbers to discuss opportunities to presumably change the trajectory of where they're at, based on your feedback as we review the budget. In terms of looking at the budget as slices of a pie, there really isn't a lot of movement in some of these slices. You will see that capital improvement grew over the year prior. Debt service is pretty much status quo, and the town side is flat. Education is a slightly smaller piece of the pie, given the fact that capital expenditures are growing. We did have a financial forecasting session with the council back in September. At that point in time, I gave you a best guess of how the budget could roll out, based on information known at that point in time. So at that point, I was projecting that total expenditures, patient town, debt service, and capital would come in at about 3.3% increase, and that would require a 4.65% increase in the mill rate. At that point in time in September, I was projecting that the governor would go back to the ECS formula under statute, which was going to start phasing in the cutting of ECS to the town. So good news is, we beat the forecast on revenue despite the governor's cuts to ECS. A lot of that is driven by growth in the grand list, which provides additional tax revenue to the town. We're seeing better than anticipated investment return. So we are seeing a positive coming out of the rising interest rate environment. For a long time, interest revenue wasn't really a major component of the town's budget. Now that we've got numbers coming out of the cellar, there is an opportunity for us to realize additional revenue coming in, just getting a higher yield on our investments at this point. We missed the forecast on total expenditures. There are some unanticipated operating drivers, which are greater now than they were anticipated to be in September, and higher than forecasted capital expenditures. If you remember, during the forecast, I was trying to get to a level base for funding of capital and assuming a slower taper of fund balance. The council's discussion has been using fund balance and spending it and making sure we're moving forward and pulling it down to policy. So this case, capital is higher than what I was forecasting to respond to that, because again, as a reminder, cardinal rule, fund balance does not get used to pay for operating expenses. It gets used to pay only for capital. One-time revenue, one-time expenditure. So the forecast was a 3.30 anticipated increase in total expenditures. The council set a benchmark of 2.5%. So when you just look at the operating side of our two chunks of the budget, neither one of us were able to hit the target. And at that time in September, we said we would explain to you why we couldn't hit the target. If we could, we could. If we couldn't, we would give you an explanation. So at least on the town side of the budget, and I'm sure the superintendent will address in her presentation, the drivers on their side of the budget, but we had significant increase in pension contributions. Some of this should not be surprise if you remember the audit presentation. There was some recorded losses in the police pension plan. That translates into increased pension contributions that have to be put in in order to meet our minimum requirements. So that's higher than was originally forecast. Contingency is up. We're going into contract negotiations with all five bargaining units. Some of them are for a full contract. Others are just a wage reopener. But the cost of wages is going to have to be addressed across every single bargaining unit, hopefully done within that fiscal year. We have increased utility expenses. So we're getting pass-throughs coming to us from entities like the water company. They see increased expenses. Some of that passes through to us when we're dealing with the cost of water and fire hydrants. So those costs get passed right through to us. The other side is addressing the electric market. So we bought electricity during COVID. It took opportunity of a really low electric market. So we were like six cents a kilowatt. So that was really good at the time, and it was really great as long as we could ride it. That contract was set for a set number of years. So we went out, we bought it again as a commodity, but six cents a kilowatt is not where the market is. So we are not anywhere near the standard offer that ever source is offering with the 20-plus cent a kilowatt range. So but we are higher than six. Six is not a number that the market sustains. So we have an increase in our utility expense for electricity, just coming out of where we were. It would have been a savings if I didn't buy electricity back during COVID to help pull down our expenses at that point in time. Programmatic growth, so there's growth in the senior program. There's been high demand for that as a service from town seniors. There's also some additional cost in there for actually utilizing our GIS. We spent a lot of capital money trying to have a GIS system, and we have the capacity now with the planner to actually make it a usable tool for the public, as well as our own internal use, which are functionalities we didn't buy, apparently. So there's an opportunity to get more out of a prior investment. Then the last item is, in certain areas, we're seeing wage pressures for our part-timers. They're getting a wage that's at the minimum wage or slightly higher, but that price point is not really competitive with other towns. It's not competitive with other jobs, and we want to be able to maintain some of these people who have some experience working down at the beach, working for park and rec, or down at the harbor. So there is a spike in some of those part-time wages to get to a point where we can retain the knowledge base that we have working in that, working for those services. On the revenue side, how we're going to fund the budget, so back to the pie. Taxes remain about the same proportion of the proposed budget as they were in the current budget. You'll see that state aid has shrunk as a component of our revenue stream with the governor's reduction of ECS. As was pointed out during the forecasting workshop, our budget is highly sensitive to any change in state aid. It's the second largest revenue stream for us. It's a big number for us. If there's any reduction, it's a major swing. So you can see that swing now where state aid is reduced. That's picked up by growth in fund balance and growth in town-generated revenue. So it's not just permits and fees. That's where some of that interest income is. So we're trying to absorb those reductions in state aid that are going to now start up again by pulling down what we see coming to us from Hartford. Changes in the grand list. The grand list did grow, grew by approximately 1.9%. The forecast was it would grow at about half a percent, which was a multi-year average. So we did see some improvement in terms of where the grand list is growing. We are discussing revenues before the whole assessment process is complete. So we are having this conversation before the Board of Assessment Appeals. Here's any appeals to decisions made by the assessor. So that will play out in March. So I did take the number that the assessor has developed when she signed off on the grand list and provided a discount to it, anticipating that there could be some reductions based on assessment appeals. So we'll have a final grand list number in March. And as was the case last year, once we roll into that April meeting where we're setting the budget before rolling off to a public hearing, we'll know where the grand list sits, and then that provides an opportunity to make a final adjustment on the revenue side. Based on where we are now with that discount on the grand list, that growth generated about $861,000 of additional tax revenue, based on the current mill rate. So you can see where we've been able to realize additional revenue coming in with economic development and improvements to individual properties. State aid, it is the second largest source of revenue for us. Normally, it is used as a tool which helps minimize the amount of taxation that needs to be raised at the local level. So the governor's budget cuts about $218,000 out of ECS this year. There's going to be a cut of that same order of magnitude next year. So we are now definitely in a downward glide path on ECS. Past two budgets were level funded, because the governor was using what he thought at the time was a good idea because of COVID, to make sure that nobody was held at a disadvantage. So everyone was level funded on their ECS. Now we're back into the swing of things of a reduction, which is just going to shift expenses over to the taxpayer to have to shoulder here, rather than the state paying for it through their revenue stream. On our side, what we generate internally by fees and services and the like, a lot of the departments have been assumed to remain flat. Again, we don't, we never know what the environment is that we're going into. A slight hiccup in the economy or recession risk becomes real, and permit revenues can decline quickly. We did see that interest rate income. Clearly, we're not going to go back down to the less than a single percent, at least based on where the Fed is communicating right now. So we can see that income increase, and we realize that that will be something that will be with us across the upcoming budget and possibly longer. The total increase in locally generated revenue is over $440,000. That equates to about a quarter of a mil of revenue that did not have to come out of taxation. Fund balance, so we use fund balance in the budget two different ways. So first is usually to provide a degree of tax relief. This is what is called the appropriated fund balance. That's in at about a quarter million. That's what we've done in the past for prior years in order to pull down the mill rate. So this budget assumes that going into this year as additional revenue. Then we also use it as applied fund balance, which is to use to pay for capital projects. So we've used it in the past. This year, it's being used again. It's being used at a higher level than we've had in the past. And again, during our workshops, my expectation is that there's going to be a continued conversation on it. My expectation is council engagement to give me some direction on how you want to see capital dollars move. So there are ideas that I have, but I'm looking for some engagement and direction from the council. That's outside expenditures. So it's proposed to be funded at 8.2 million, which is the 5.62 increase. Some of the things that the budget has to respond to is we have an increase in the tip fee to take our solid waste. MIRA is being phased out and is supposed to be restructured by the governor, assuming that that bill passes. But even if it doesn't, the tip fee of what we have to pay to have our solid waste disposed of is on the upswing, and it will continue to be on the upswing for a number of years. So the budget has to absorb that increased operating expense to take solid waste from the transfer station to Essex. Our waste, unlike a lot of other towns in Connecticut, is not going to be packaged up and shipped west and south into a landfill. It will go to a burn plant, just not in Hartford. It will go up to Preston. We have inflation uncertainty. It's not clear where some of our expenses are going, based on suppliers not being able to give us real numbers. Insurance increases are anticipated. So we're looking at both healthcare increases and increases to property liability and auto. That was the case last year. That remains the case going forward. And there are idiosyncrasies of the insurance market that have an influence on how our coverage is priced. Pension liability is growing, and that puts higher contributions on the table. So the locally controlled programs, the one we have for the police department, the one we have for the fire department, those are our plans. So we have to fund those. The municipal employee plan, which is a state program, but unlike the teachers program, we have to contribute to, that would be experiencing the same market fluctuations that we see on our plan. So there's growth going under MERS, as well as the police plan. Growing demand for programs, so you've got high demand for the senior program. And we alluded to this during the workshop, during the forecasting workshop, that that department would grow and perhaps grow at a rate faster than some of the other departments. That electricity increase and utility pass-through increases, the budget tries to respond to that. Electricity is now a fixed commodity expense, so the budget reflects the increase of going up from six cents a kilowatt to our current rate. And then pending union negotiations, there's a lot moving on there with the bargaining units. So we're going to have to continue to look at refining where we stand. Contract settlements are constantly being monitored. So it's been watching both where interest rates are going, where inflation is going, and where contract settlements are shaking out, to inform what we think could be contract settlements that would be fair or reasonable, or something that an arbitrator could theoretically award. Cutting up the budget into sort of the operational units. So government administration is a lot of the town hall operations. So there's less than a 1% increase in that area. Land use and development, this is where you've got the growth coming out of having our town planner engaged now. So some of that expense is activating our GIS capacity to be a useful tool and actually realizing some return on the earlier investments. Emergency protection is police and fire, so there's minimal increase in their expense. Public works has, public works and facilities has a spike. That's picking up the expense associated with electricity and some of those utility expenses being passed through. Recreation and human services, within that is the senior program. So there's some growth there. Some of that competitive pressure on part-time wages is also in that bucket. The library is in at 1.94. Insurance and benefits, that's my, the pension driver and where we stand with healthcare at this point. Trying to slice it up into slightly different buckets. So personnel expense, the budget, because we're going into contract negotiations, does not assume any general wage increases, because they haven't been negotiated yet. So the full-time salary lines, unless somebody has a step increase within their bargaining unit, it's assumed to be flat. So when you're looking at the budget, understand that that's an artificially suppressed number. That we will be in negotiations. There will be theoretically adjustments to those lines once we have settlements. So that bucket would include the part-timer increases that have been spoken about, but it just doesn't include full-timers. Repair and maintenance is not a significant jump on that end. Operating supplies is flattish. Software and IT has some increases baked in, based on the service contracts we have for some of our softwares as a service. Those have automatic increase escalators every year. Professional services, this is where we're relying on outside vendors to support us in delivering services. So there's a slight increase there. Utilities and fuel has a larger increase based on electricity. Risk management, that is our property liability and auto line. And then contingency is up from kind of the level we've tried to hold it at in normal years, to reflect a number of factors. So there's the contract negotiations that I've already spoken of. Other budgets need to be responsive to things we don't know. So registrar voters is an excellent example. Everybody voted when they went to the ballot box to say, yes, we want to have early voting. It's supposed to be implemented. The state has yet to determine what that's even going to look like. We don't know what the expenses will be associated with that, because there isn't even an idea of how early, early voting is going to be. It will have an expense associated with it, because it's not operated during the way we normally do elections. So there will be some sort of expense. There's been statements said that the state will pick that up. It's not in the governor's budget, so the General Assembly will have to add money if they're supposed to make towns whole for early voting at some point in time during the fiscal year. We just don't know. I did not budget for it because of that, and contingency will have to respond once we are told what it's going to be. It felt good to vote for it in November, but now we need to have some direction. We don't have that direction right now, and I guess it will play out over the session for what it's going to look like. So contingency needs to respond to what costs we're going to have to absorb at the local level for whatever early voting is supposed to look like. Capital improvements, this gives you a historical snapshot of where capital funding is in those outer years. Those are the more recent budgets, with the use of fund balance being transparent and put through the budget, rather than the prior practice, which was approve it at a special town meeting, where the public didn't, voters didn't have the full opportunity to vote on it. Here, we recognize it both as revenue and an expense. So the green bar shows you how much of the capital plan is funded out of fund balance, and then the blue bar is the total. So our numbers are up. We've been utilizing fund balance at high rates. There is a higher rate over last year, assumed for the capital plan that's in front of you now. Based on your engagement, we can have a conversation about the trajectory of that So some of the higher priority projects that are included in the capital plan, radio replacement continues to appear as an item for continued funding. That's a pay-as-you-go project, rather than a bonded project. Continuing the fire apparatus replacement reserve, they are going to be looking at apparatus coming up. So we need to continue to have that reserve funded, so that cash is in place when it's time to replace the apparatus, rather than having a shock to the capital plan to respond to a million-dollar-plus piece of equipment in one year. Continuing funding for paving, in order to stay on top of the cycle of maintaining our roads. The goal is to touch the road every 20 years. Some roads need more assistance than others. So we're trying to maintain a cycle of holding the roads together. And again, doing that as a pay-as-you-go basis, rather than bonding it. Pay for it over 20 years, aside from wasting money on interest, by the time you pay it off the bond, you got to do the road again. Deferred maintenance and rolling stock replacement is part of the capital plan always. Turf field replacement at IROC is in. This is meant to complement an anticipated appropriation from the council and a town meeting on ARPA, so that some of it would come out of grant funds, another chunk of it would come out of the budget. It's currently in, assuming all that money would be in in one year, in order to make sure that we get the project and money that we get the project and money spent within the ARPA timelines. You could, in theory, based on whatever input you give me, spread that out over two years, but that project will have to be aggressively managed to make sure that the ARPA money is spent before 12/31/2026. WPCC is in with a funding request for their ongoing sewer project, so this is building off of their anticipated project this spring in the parking lots where, in the downtown, where sewers could, or the community septic system could go, so this would provide some funding for the next step. And then we've got some state mandated projects that are coming up where there's not a lot of flexibility but to do it, but we've tried to spread it out over two years. So first up is, it's revale time again. So we're putting in the first slug of cash in this budget. A second installment would be in the next year's budget so that funding is in place. So when it's time for revale, we've spread it out over two budgets. The other side is the rewrite of the town's plan of conservation and development. That expires in 2025, so same methodology. We've got to have another one in place. If you don't have it in place, the state can penalize you and take away discretionary grants, which we look to use when that's an opportunity. It's same process, put a little bit of money in this year and a little bit more money in next year. Planning and zoning does not want to go through what they did last time, which was them writing it themselves. So this would be, the approach would be utilizing consultants to help prepare the document for the town rather than having a committee write it up. Debt service, so this is one of the brighter spots. So it's going down again this year. As you can see from sort of the history, we reached peak debt service and we're starting to slowly decline. The amortization schedule will have us at this slow decline for a number of years before it accelerates, which opens up, I guess, opportunities to start looking at bonding again. We're moving forward with pulling that number down. We're not going to see savings like we saw in the past with refinancing opportunities. The interest rate doesn't really support that, so we're going to pretty much follow the amortization schedule as it exists now, playing out over the next few years. Proposed mill rate to support the budget. So as I noted at the beginning, there's an increase, so it would be a 30.79 mill rate. So that's an increase of .96 mills, or 3.22 over where we are at now. This is lower than the 31.25 mills that were out in prior budgets in recent history. The history of where we've been, so there's been some zeros. There's been a reduction based on revaluation, so an effort has been made to suppress the mill rate, but this number is where we stand tonight over our workshops. My expectation is council engagement will give direction that could adjust the trajectory of that number also. Breaking up the mill rate and distributing it into the individual chunks of the budget. Obviously, education is the largest part of the budget, so it has the largest millage assigned to it at over 17 mills of the total mill rate. General government's in at about one. Land use is in at about a third of a mill. Public safety is in at two mills. Public works at 1.7. Recreation and human services and now senior programs is in at about a third of a mill. The library is in at a fourth of a mill, or four tenths of a mill. Capital and debt is up, based primarily on capital, at over four mills. And sort of the non-departmental, which is insurance expenses and the like, is in at about a little over three mills. What does this mean to the average taxpayer? So I've given you this calculation before so you can understand what the budget means and also to put some context in terms of discussion of cutting so that you have meaningful cuts, not just cuts for the sake of cutting, not cutting $5 here and $5 there, just so you know what the goalpost is for a cut that impacts the mill rate. So our average home in Clinton has a market value of 312,000. 70% of that is the assessed value, which is what is basis of taxation. Current tax bill for that average house is $6,500 a year. The proposed budget would take it up to about 6,700, which is a $209 increase. So value of a mill is 1.73 million. To impact the mill rate, you've got to cut it by one one-hundredth of a mill or $17,300. That gives you the means to reduce the budget. If you find that $17,300, you'll give that taxpayer one one-hundredth of a mill or $2.19 off their tax bill. So the calculus to be mindful of is 17,300, but I'm assuming you're going to be looking for an adjustment in the mill rate that provides greater than $2.19. So it's going to be multiples of 17,300, and that's going to have to be the number you're mindful of going through the budget. I don't know what the appetite for reductions will be this year based on where we've been in the past, but that's the number to be mindful of. Again, as has been the case in the past, when things change, assumptions change, I always bring you updates and new numbers and provide you the opportunity to reduce the budget as things go forward. How that average tax bill is going to get spent, the majority of it will go towards education, so it'll be $3,800 of that bill goes to pay for the school system. Then 217 goes to pay for general administration of the town. $68 for land use. 455 for your police and fire, which is not a bad price. $368 for public works and facilities. Recreation is in at $80 for a year, which is cheaper than a gym membership. Library is in at less than $90, which is probably cheaper than a Netflix membership. Capital and debt, that's part of our deal for maintaining the town, and we all voted on that debt, so that's in at 969. Those non-departmental expenses, which support everything above that, is in at about $680. So going forward over the workshop and as you digest this document, a good budget is all about setting priorities, having the budget reflect those priorities. And under this form of government, it's not the priorities of one, it's the priorities of consensus of the council. So the council will have to give me feedback on what your priorities and directions are as we try to move forward and have a good, fair budget. Difficult decisions went into how you balance out the budget. Likely, there's going to be more decisions that are going to be difficult ahead for where we go, and a lot of back and forth, I'm hoping, to help give us some direction on how we see the budget evolving in total and where you want to see the revenue streams go. So that's the end of what I have for tonight. You've got your homework now to digest this, and then we meet next week to be an opportunity for continued council engagement. And with that, I will hand it over to our superintendent of schools to present their side of the budget. [inaudible] We don't have that one either. Oh, for crying out loud. We don't have that one either. Oh, that's good.
Thank you, thank you.
If we have 1,500 kids in the schools, how can we afford to be 126,000?
This comes with an ad? Right. Hungry.
What's over there?
A video.
Someone's cooking some fish.
Commercial.
Yeah.
Well, you got to compete with the commercial.
Yeah, cooking shop.
She went from cooking.
I got my slides up.
You're cooking too?
It might, you might want that.
So you should have received a budget book. Right inside the cover of that should be a copy of this presentation for you. So I will kind of do my presentation at the very end. I'll walk you through the components of the budget book and give you the overview. I'd like to thank you for letting me be here tonight to give you a broad overview of the work that the Board of Education has done over the last six weeks. So as you guys are beginning your work, looking at each of your department budgets and what Carl has brought to you. The Board of Ed has done that work beginning right January 2nd, when we came back from our Christmas break, through a series of workshops, and finally approving the budget that I am proud to present tonight at a Board of Ed meeting on February 6th. So they've gone through these workshops, so what we have tonight is the result of all of that hard work on the part of the Board of Ed. So I'd like to introduce our Board of Ed Chair, Erica Galvin. I think she wants to say something before I go into all the details of the slides.
Well, really, I just want to say thank you. I want to thank the council for, you know, I've said often that I really see our relationship as being critically important, that we have a job to do and then you have a job to do, and both of those are, we can't do that work without the other. As Mary Ann said, my board started, or the Board of Education, I should say, started this work in January. We spent most of January doing nothing but vetting our, discussing and vetting our budgetary decisions. We took into account, you know, kind of the programmatic and supportive needs of our community. We took into account our enrollment numbers, and we certainly took into account your directives as we were kind of trying to figure out where we need to land in terms of, in terms of an increase. So I just wanted to take a second to introduce Mary Ann, thank her for all of her hard work and to recognize the hard work of the Board of Education that really has committed a great deal of time and energy into the decisions that are being presented to you this evening.
So I will begin with just emphasizing the responsibility of the Board of Education to really make sure that this budget provides the materials, resources, and programming that's required by law and meets the needs of our students, at the same time being responsive to the community interests for our schools. So a picture's worth a thousand words. You can see we start with our littlest learners at Joel School through to our middle school, Elliott Middle School, and then the Morgan School with the culmination of our students on graduation day. It's also important to mention that our budgetary planning and the work in the district is driven by our strategic plan. So in September of this year, the culmination of an entire year's worth of work, the Board of Education adopted a new three-year strategic plan. That strategic plan is driven by the mission, which is to empower learners to embrace and influence the future with courage and compassion. And there are four strategic objectives that are listed there for you that really guides our work. Each of these strategic objectives is broken down into specific priorities and action steps that occur throughout the district, at our schools, at the district level. And this plan is the core of our work and is the baseline of the decision-making that the board made, as well as the administrators and our school staff made as we proposed components for the budget. That timeline of strategic planning involved listening to our community, surveying our parents, our staff, talking with our students, and with our Board of Education to determine what is most important and what needed to be in that strategic plan. So this slide represents those areas of focus that this budget book, and Carl mentioned earlier, it's more than spreadsheets and numbers. It is about the lifeblood of what our schools bring to our students and to the community. So these are highlights of the various pieces that are important to support our students and our staff, which is the core of what this budget supports. As I did mention, and I think this slide helps to illustrate, the board's work began in September as we came and attended the town council workshops and forecasting, as we listened to some of the pressures and examined those ourselves that we were going to be facing going into our budget process. In following that, our buildings began to work with staff and our central office, working on the district-wide accounts that support the facilities and our school functions, and that led to pulling together an initial budget, which is kind of where you all are here with Carl presenting, that I brought to the Board of Ed at the very beginning of January. We began subcommittee meetings, presentations, looking at line items, looking at our objects, the stressors and the pressures, and then moved towards a Board of Ed budget, which I am now presenting tonight. So this was a process, and as Carl mentioned, we didn't start where we landed. There were a lot of difficult decisions, cuts, things that we made, decisions to put things off, to do different ways, and really look for a variety of cost-saving and containment efforts. So I'll talk a little bit about that tonight. There are a number of, I think, pressures, assumptions, and things that influence this budget. In the center, you see that road to recovery, and some of you who were here last year may recognize that slide. There's no doubt that the pandemic years and the impacts of COVID on our classrooms and on our students have impacted where they are right now. And so that's at the center of this slide because while we've moved past masks and we've moved past social distancing and some of those other things, we are just now getting back to more normal instructional and classroom-level experiences for our students. With that said, we are seeing growth in academic achievement on the part of our students, which is really encouraging, but it would be false to say that that work is over and that we're anywhere close to where we need to be with our students, both academically but also in that social, emotional, and mental health aspect. So you see that there at the bottom. Last year, I said this is going to be a multi-year recovery, and it is, and so there are some decisions that the board made around this budget that really do help to support that continued recovery for our students and our staff. As Carl mentioned and you heard, health insurance costs, I'll talk a little more about it, inflationary pressures, electricity, those are all challenges in our budget as well and are driving some of our numbers. So we'll start with our total requests. You did see these numbers, I think, earlier in Carl's slides. We are looking at a $35,446,476. It's an increase of 2.59% over last year's budget and equates to $894,272. So the next several slides, I'm going to break down, as Carl did tonight, some of the high-level objects and pressures on the budget, things that are driving the increase, and give you some backup and some context to these numbers within the slide presentation. Within the budget book, there's all of the detail that you would need to dig a little deeper, but hopefully this gives context and some narrative that will help you as you start to look at our budget. And I believe I'll be back on March 2nd to talk to the board, answer questions, and so you have a period of time, not just to hear it tonight, but to dig in. So I'm going to begin with one of the largest parts of our budget, which really should be the largest part of our budget, which is the lifeblood of any school system, and it is our staff who are meeting the needs of our students, who are teaching them, helping them grow, develop, learn, and be challenged. So this takes the first three lines that really are representative of supporting the staff in our schools. You can see that our certified salaries are down. There's a negative. As Carl mentioned and you heard, health insurance costs, I'll talk a little more about it, inflationary pressures, electricity, those are all challenges in our budget as well and are driving some of our numbers. So we'll start with our total requests. You did see these numbers, I think, earlier in Carl's slides. We are looking at $35,446,476. It's an increase of 2.59% over last year's budget and equates to $894,272. So the next several slides, I'm going to break down, as Carl did tonight, some of the high-level objects and pressures on the budget, things that are driving the increase, and give you some backup and some context to these numbers within the slide presentation. Within the budget book, there's all of the detail that you would need to dig a little deeper, but hopefully this gives context and some narrative that will help you as you start to look at our budget. And I believe I'll be back on March 2nd to talk to the Board, answer questions. And so you have a period of time, not just to hear it tonight, but to dig in. So I'm going to begin with one of the largest parts of our budget, which really should be the largest part of our budget, which is the lifeblood of any school system, and it is our staff who are meeting the needs of our students, who are teaching them, helping them grow, develop, learn, and be challenged. So this takes the first three lines that really are representative of supporting the staff in our schools. You can see that our certified salaries are down. There's a negative percent change, and that is due to the fact that we have a net reduction of certified staff due to declining enrollment of 5.2 certified staff. We also have a slight increase in our non-certified salaries. There's a couple of reasons for that. The non-certified salaries include two new para-educator positions. It also includes a new unfunded state mandate that all para-educators must receive and participate in 18 hours of professional development, which equates to about three extra days of work for our para-educators, which needs to be contained and represented in our budget. So that increase is due to that. And then we have our employee benefits. And employee benefits, the primary piece of that is our health insurance. And as Carl said, right now, we're budgeted at 10%, and we're hopeful that that will continue to tighten. And before we get to maybe even March 2nd, but definitely, I think, the public hearing, the state should be giving our final number. If there are any reductions there, we would make that adjustment. And we've been able to do that the past couple of years, but last year, they did a surprise increase. So we are budgeting in alignment with the town, and we'll see where that lands. So here is the employee benefits. We are part of the Connecticut State Partnership Plan. We moved to this plan several years ago, and over the course of those years, we've saved over $1.5 million in doing so. So it's been a good move for us. We've seen slightly higher increases in the last two years from the state, but they have at times offset that. We're still at a lower budgeted amount than we were prior to moving to this plan several years ago. This number of employee benefits also includes a small projected increase in Social Security and Medicare costs based on our projections. And then there are a bunch of, a number of small amounts that make up about $80,000 in this line item. They're not increasing. So the increase in this line item is due primarily to the increase in the Connecticut State Partnership Plan. I'm talking about the budget in terms of objects or larger categories, and I'll show you that in the budget book. Every cost center, every school, and then we have a Department for Maintenance, Special Services, District Wide and Central Office, they all have line items that feed into these larger objects. So again, for context, I'm going to talk tonight about the object increases, but you will have the more specific detail as you have time to look at the budget book. Another major increase in one of our objects is for professional technical services. It's a significant increase, and these are, these bullets represent the areas that are driving this. We have certain specialized contracted services that are required for some of our students, and those services are increasing. We had a couple of increases this year we had to absorb. So that's a big portion of this. We also had an increase in trying to secure athletic trainer services for our athletes. We were fortunate to be able to, when our contract wasn't fulfilled by our previous trainer to contract with Yale, it included a slight increase. The Board voted on that this year, and I think we can all agree, the benefit of those trainer services for our students. That's about a $20,000 increase that's adding to that total number. We have a few in-service training costs and literacy. We have some offsets in other lines for that. And then every other year, there are certain actuary costs for auditing that are required, and this year, it goes up about $15,000. The last bullet, though, is an important one to talk about. Our nursing services have been contracted since I came here in 2009 with VNA. VNA was bought out by a Yale group and are moving on from us. And in looking at what the costs would be, we made a decision, and the Board has supported the idea of not contracting out the services, but bringing them under the Board of Ed. So our model would be similar, our services. We're hopeful the people will be the same, but in doing so, there's a savings of about $80,000. And that savings is the overhead costs. So all of those costs of human resources, personnel, hiring, all of the management of payroll is being brought under our umbrella of Central Office and Business, and that's saving a total of $80,000. So we're, and we're going to get the same services that we have and maybe more efficient. Probably not a surprise, I'm going to tell you the same story about electricity costs. We have strongly benefited over the years. We do have some solar panels in some of our buildings, and that has kept our kilowatt-hour costs down. And then we have gained by the market and different things that we have done, but we have seen them, you know, go from a very low number, like Carl talked about. Our high school right now is being charged at 48 cents a kilowatt hour. It's just increased, I think, the middle school is like 30 cents. So the Board just agreed, and we did just go out to a third party. We've locked in rates. That has offset what this increase could be, but it's an increase we're estimating of $156,000 despite locking in the rates at a pretty favorable piece where we are right now. The other thing the Board has been exploring in the last year, the Building and Ground Subcommittee, is to look at reducing our usage through an LED lighting project. We're about ready to move forward with that. That works with Eversource, so there's no upfront cost. And so that's another way to try to reduce our energy costs and contain those costs. But that $156,000 is the increase that we're estimating for our buildings. Repairs and maintenance, the town bid went out on septic and refuse, so you'll see an increase when you look at those line items. They fall into the repairs and maintenance category. They make up the majority of that $39,000 is the increase in those two contracts as a result of the bid. Transportation is always a favorite conversation. It does make up a decent portion of our budget, and we are seeing this year, there will be a $94,000, $94,314 increase in transportation costs. The main driver of that is increase in out-of-town transportation, as well as an increase in the diesel fuel costs. The contract increase is offset, though. The Board was able to enter into contract negotiations. We're coming out of the five-year contract with our bus company, and through negotiations, we were able to negotiate very favorable rates. Most districts are seeing in bid results and in their transportation contracts, anywhere between 14% and 18% increases. You'll see, when you get into our Board of Ed lines, our increase is much, much lower than that, and we're able to offset it. We've done some route analysis, and we're able to reduce at least one bus. And so that number increase is really due to out-of-town transportation. Our in-town transportation has a much smaller increase because of the favorable terms of the contract, as well as a reduction of one bus in our routing. Carl may have mentioned this, you know, we have continued to see over the years increases in our insurances. So this is the increase that's been quoted to us by our insurance carrier for next year. Our buildings really work hard on our supplies lines. So supplies other, the main increases that are contributing are custodial supply costs, inflationary impacts on that. We've seen those increases this year. So this is looking at our actual, we've made some changes to products and tried to create some efficiencies to keep that lower. We also have some Morgan equipment lines. Equipment is just more expensive due to inflation. And then we are required by the C I A C to add shot clocks in our gym. There is no funding for that, so we have to account for that in our budget, and that begins next fall. And then we have some small increases in our software licensing that's used throughout the district, but I would say that that is offset, those increases are offset by an examination of all the software we use and really looking, we've eliminated some software pieces that aren't used to great extent in order to, again, contain those costs and really just make sure that the ones that are used effectively to create efficiencies in operations and then in the classroom, the ones that students and teachers are relying on, that we continue to fund. But we are seeing some increase in licensing costs. Instructional supplies, all supplies, those are all of the things that support our classrooms that kids need, that teachers need. And again, a lot of work to make decisions about that. We've moved to paperless experiences. We use our Chromebooks for a lot of things, but overall, for the entire district, for all of those instructional materials, we're seeing a small increase. We do have some decreases in objects. So our tuition object includes any students who are going to vocational or agricultural schools and our magnet schools. We're required to pay a tuition if students choose to go there, apply, and are accepted. And so we have a slight decrease in the number of students we anticipate attending. And then the larger cost decrease is in our projected out-of-district placements. So we have a reduction of about $50,000 in that line item or in those two line items together. The Board of Ed did make a decision to eliminate a dues and fees piece. Their membership in the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed is a reduction. And then we looked at other training needs and costs. And you saw earlier, there was like a staff development increase. We're trying to offset it here with some other decisions about what we really use and what we really need to support us. And then lastly, our textbook line is down. We don't, we have a reduced need for new books. I will mention that there is a new right-to-read legislation that's requiring us to move forward with literacy materials, but the work that Marco has done with our teachers and our schools in making those decisions, we have some other means to be able to fund that. So we're able to reduce our textbook line. This is a colorful pie chart, but it does, you know, for me, it emphasizes the fact that if you look at our blue and our orange, our salaries and benefits, that's the lifeblood of a school district, and that's where the majority of money is going. As we do this work with the Board of Ed, with my administrators, we are looking to squeeze all of those other lines to make sure that our funding can go where it needs to be, which is to our students in our classrooms, to meet their needs, to help them recover. We have students in all different places, and I believe we have that this budget supports the materials, resources, and most importantly, the staffing needs for our students. And then this is just taking the increase itself and really looking at what those drivers are to the increases. There are some objects, you know, line items that are increasing or decreasing, so this represents the objects that are really driving the increase. And again, you can see the highlights that I talked about tonight are where the increases are coming from. I'm ending with a single page of many of the things I just talked about, the summary of the efforts that the Board, our administrators, our staff has made to bring you this budget. As I stated in January, we were double where we are now. There were a lot of difficult decisions, discussions, alignment that needed to be happening, going back, sharpening pencils, looking for ways that we can be more efficient in our work. So I've talked about most of these tonight. I've summarized them all for you on this page. You know, I will mention that the idea of cooperative regional partnerships comes up quite a bit, and how are we looking at that? We've partnered with the town for services. We did just enter into a partnership in football that will have a little bit of cost savings in the first year, and that's represented in this budget. But going forward, we also might see some more. I didn't talk much about our paperless efforts. There's some changes in numbers and contracts based on that that bring some reductions. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the reduction of certified staff. We have been addressing declining enrollment since I became superintendent with the idea of how we can strengthen our district while still making the adjustments that are necessary to make sure we're staffed appropriately and we can meet students' needs. We've reduced staff over that time. We've closed a school. We've reduced administrative staff, and we've continued to make decisions around staffing that support what our strategic objectives are and what our student needs are. And so this budget made some tough decisions about where we are. And in addition, in use of COVID relief funds, you may hear from other towns, other districts, as you hear budgeting, we made some strong decisions about how we would use the COVID relief grant funding. And we applied that prudently with the idea that that would phase out, and we would not create a huge cliff for the district or for the town. And the reason that this budget is coming in where it is compared to many of the other headlines you're going to see is because those decisions were made and supported by the Board and then difficult decisions as we really looked at what we needed to let go of and what needed to be brought into the operating budget. So, you know, we may have more discussion about that in March, but this budget represents real people. It represents real people who may not be working with us next year. Those are really difficult decisions that were made, but we believe this budget at this point meets the needs that our students have, meets where we are on the road to recovery, and will help us flourish. And so we're excited about that. I'm proud to present this to you tonight. We know, as Carl said, this is a process. I'll be back on March 2nd to answer more questions, so hopefully you have some time. And I'm happy to answer questions or provide background information to any of you related to anything I talked about tonight, questions you might have or hear, or anything in the budget book. Okay? So I'm going to take just a second. I color-coded it because the table of contents is laid out that way, but these are our different sections. We give you all that information. It's all there for you. We have our enrollment information, our staffing information that shows how we've been staffed since 2018-19 and what's happened, so you can look at trending over time. I think one of the most important sections to look at is the Request by Object section. That Request by Object section, and if you turn to that in your books briefly, so it's the third tab called Request by Object. When you get to that page, it takes each of the large areas and gives you what contributes to that, and then it gives you a narrative of why it may be increasing or decreasing and what the drivers are. So it's a really good overall summary when you come back to look at our budget and are like, wait a minute, why is this number so high? It pretty much tells you, if you don't want to go through all the line items. Two pages in from there, on page 19, is the table that breaks it down and shows you what those object categories are, right? How much they contribute to the budget. So that's a really critical section when you're looking to kind of get a good overview, again, of this budget, and it's pretty much what I represented tonight. And I think it's one of the best ways to view the budget and to help understand what the Board of Education budget supports. As Carl pointed out, it is a large part of the town budget. It's an important part. Schools are a critical piece, but we don't take lightly the responsibility we have, both to our families and our kids, to our staff and our students, and to the taxpayers in this town. So as Erica said, we are in partnership, and any information I can provide to you prior to March 2nd and then that night, I'm happy to do so. The following section after Request by Object is kind of what I think your binders are. It takes every single line item for each of our cost centers, we call them our schools, our departments, and it tells you what that line item is and then how much. So there's a summary page, and then behind that, it starts with Joel, and it's every line item, every dollar amount, every increase. Okay? So the detail in this budget book is all there as you want to dig in or don't want to dig in and want to do more of the summary side. And then finally, I'm going to just hit that last tab. I get lots of questions about our tuition numbers, right, and what that means. So this gives an overview. We taught, the next couple pages, page 50 and 51, talk about grant and revenue information. Where does the money come from? What are our other grants that we get? What does that support? And there's information of dollars, there's information about what it supports. It includes some information on our per pupil expenditure and how that compares, which is always a question that we get, capital expenditure, and then finally, some information about the Board's debt service that Carl has already provided to you. So there's a lot of information, and I appreciate the chance to kind of lay it out a little bit and give some context before you have a chance to look at it and before I meet with you again in March. I know you have work to do on the town departments and the budget, and then looking at how the Board of Ed budget folds in and how you and Carl can hopefully support what the Board of Ed has put before you. But again, as we work through this, if there are changes, we'll bring those to Carl, and I look forward to meeting you on March 2nd to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everybody good? All good? You don't want to talk anymore? Well, thank you, Carl and Mary Ann, for all the information. We are good. We'll see everybody next week.